All right, John, we are live and folks are coming in, so you may begin when you're ready.
Give you a countdown to three, two, one. Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Board of Directors of Reston Association for the purpose of holding a public hearing related to a referendum to be held to enable members of six clusters to repeal a covenant that requires them to use a centralized air conditioning service. Tonight, the Association Board of Directors is holding the second of two public hearings regarding a referendum to repeal portions of the rest indeed that relate solely to six clusters. Colson Cluster, Governor Square Cluster, Hickory Cluster, Wainwright Cluster, Washington Plaza Cluster, and Waterview Cluster. RELAC is a centralized cooling system regulated by the State Corporation Commission as a public utility that has been serving homes around Lake Anne for almost sixty years. To be clear, Reston Association does not own, control, or regulate RELAC. Pursuant to the rest indeed, three hundred and forty-three homes in those six clusters may not use air conditioning independent of the RELAC system unless a member of the household is medically excused. In such a case, Reston Association, under the Americans with Disability Act, is compelled to grant an exception to the covenant. My understanding is that twenty-seven such exemptions are in place out of three hundred and forty-three cluster residents required to use RELAC. On December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, just sixty-three days ago, users of RELAC were noticed by by RELAC that it intended not to operate its system in two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Waddell's notice was not sent to the association. Rather, the board learned of Mr. Waddell's intention from our members. On Wednesday, February seventh, Mr. Waddell sent Reston Association an email that was understood to state RELAC's intention now to operate in two thousand and twenty-four. Today, Mr. Waddell confirmed our understanding of his intentions to operate RELAC in two thousand and twenty-four. The uncertainty of the last sixty-eight days has been a terrible situation, and our members who have relied on RELAC have been placed in an impossible predicament. The board understands that there is significant community concern regarding the serious health risks that the lack of a functioning cooling system poses for the members served by RELAC. The board has taken the steps available to it to enable the current cluster RELAC users to have a choice as to whether or not to continue to use the RELAC water chilling process. For those of you who have tuned in tonight to see the Board Operations Committee meeting, will be advised that that meeting will commence after the end of this public hearing. I'm going to ask that the board move to adopt the agenda, amending it to provide for an executive session after the close of the public hearing. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Director Perry. Discussion on adopting the agenda. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 That appears to be unanimous of all those present in voting. With that, I hereby open the second public hearing relating to the possible revocation of Reston Section, Deed Section, Roman two, B, parent B, closed parent, parent fifteen, closed parent, which reads, "Air conditioning units in any residential cluster in which a central air conditioning service is available to the lot line, no individual air conditioning units of any type shall be permitted, period. This covenant may only be amended or revoked by at least two-thirds vote of the Category A members of all residential clusters on the service." Tonight is not intended as a dialogue, but rather as an opportunity for those Reston Association members who wish to advise the board as to their opinion of the proposed referendum to do so. Some ground rules. Comments or reserve for Reston Association members. When called upon to speak by the presiding officer, members are to state their full name and property address. Individual members representing their own interests or opinion are allowed three minutes to speak. If representing a homeowner's group, a cluster, a Reston Association committee, or a residence-based organization, they will be allowed five minutes to speak. Brittany, I believe we have a list of people who have signed up previously to speak. I'm gonna, do you have, do you have your bell with you?
I do not have my bell, but I have the timer set up.
Wonderful, so the timer will be up for people to see as they make their comments. Who signed up first?
We have Mark and Cheryl Lusko.
Please unmute yourselves and you will have three minutes.
All right, good evening. It's actually Mike and Cheryl Lusko, eighteen thirty-one Wainwright Drive, Reston, Governor Square. We've been following this for, since the beginning, a long time and doing a lot of research and a lot of correspondence along the way. One of the items that I wanted to ask the question of is, and I think it was posed earlier, but I don't know if we ever really got an answer to this. But we know that currently, and you stated at the beginning, that the co-op or Mark Waddell intends to run this system.
Mr. Lusko, we've lost you. Can you, can you speak closer to the mic?
Yeah, can you hear me now, sir?
Yes, sir, please proceed.
Okay, so we know, I don't know what you heard, so I would say we know right now that, as you stated, that Mark Waddell and potentially the co-op plan to operate in two thousand and twenty-four, which we hadn't known the last time we met. And we also know that the referendum vote is set to, our ballots mailed out on the sixteenth, and it goes through the sixteenth to March eighth. So those are two facts that we know. But what we want to know, what I would like to know is what's RA's position should something happen and RELAC doesn't operate and the referendum doesn't pass and the covenant stays in place, thus leaving a covenant to regulate that we only use something that comes to our house that isn't there. So my, my opinion is, I guess the only recourse we would have at this point is to apply for an exemption to be able to get a unit. And then along that, if we do that and it goes down that path, and then somewhere in the future, two thousand and twenty-five, someone says, you know what, I want to, want to reinvigorate the system and start it up again, and the covenant would still be in place. Would anyone that switched over be required to prove that they still need to be off it? Or would they need to come back on the system if it does come into fruition? And that's it.
Okay, thank you for that. I had intended to call on Mr. Luss to give us, and Mr. Adams to give us some background before opening up for a public comment. Maybe they can address that question in the course of their opening. Mr. Luss, you want to go ahead?
Sure, thanks, thanks, John. So that's a great question. We actually do have some slides that are queued up regarding what happens should the referendum pass or should the referendum fail. So I think instead of maybe starting with some of the questions that we were prepared to respond to first thing, it might be more appropriate, John, for Cam to walk through his two slides to address the question, and we can come back to other questions as the hearing goes on. So Cam, if you're okay with maybe sharing those slides, we could, we could address that now.
Sure, absolutely. Let's go ahead. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Awesome, thanks, Bob. So this is, this was created in anticipation of the RELAC announcement going either way. Our covenants team has worked really hard to begin to look at potential options in supporting RA members through the process of either going through the DRB or going through covenants. So as it is right now, if the referendum passes, we are hopeful that most clusters, whether it passes or not, creates a cluster standard for exterior HVAC systems. This will allow and streamline the DRB process to, whereas if their cluster hasn't established cluster standards for HVAC units, the cluster member should be able to have their application reviewed at a staff review level, which is the quickest review level other than no application. So if the referendum passes, please consult your covenants advisor and cluster standard. If there is a cluster standard, there does need to be adherence to the requirements in the standard and to submit a completed DRB application. These applications can be reviewed by your covenants advisor, and that's generally after a receipt of a completed application, three to five business days. However, there's, there's an application that has an affected party or deviates from the DRB-approved cluster standards. That application would need to be reviewed by a DRB panel, which generally the timetable on that is two to four weeks. If there is no cluster standard, the design guideline prevails in this situation, and so the owner would be required to submit a completed DRB application with a supporting information, and that application would be required to be reviewed at a panel level. We are currently looking at establishing a HVAC-specific DRB application to help streamline that process as well, so that if all of the questions on that application are answered, it should make that process a little bit easier for members to go through. If the referendum does not pass, the next step-
Can I ask you to just stop just there for a second and go back?
Sure.
My understanding, can you go back a slide? It's my understanding that four of the six affected clusters already have a design guideline adopted?
Two of the six already have a DRB-approved cluster standard. We actually were able to team up each cluster that didn't, so the four remaining, with a DRB member, and I believe as of today, there looks to be two to three that are actively submitting or have already submitted a DRB application for a cluster standard. Wainwright is one. I think Colson Cluster is actively working on one. And I believe Governor Square is actively working on theirs as well. And we have been engaged with Hickory Cluster's attorney as well as Hickory Cluster's president to kind of see if there's any assistance that covenant staff can provide as well as the DRB member that's assigned to Hickory Cluster.
I see in the chat that Mr. McGuckin has told us that Governor Square submitted theirs today.
Perfect.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to clarify that for folks who might be listening.
Not a problem. So if the referendum does not pass, the deed is still in effect. So cluster members must receive a medical exemption from the covenants committee prior to submitting a DRB application for any exterior HVAC system. The covenants committee currently meets once a month on the third Wednesday of every month. And so at our February meeting next week, we will be determining whether or not they are available to either have a weekly meeting that is specific to reviewing RELAC exemptions for the medical accommodation, or if they are going to review these exemptions via unanimous consent and then ratify those approvals at the next available covenants committee meeting. However, properties that do not have an approved medical exemption will not be permitted to install exterior HVAC systems if the referendum does not pass. And a little bit about the medical exemption. If it is approved by the covenants committee, that is a separate approval from having to go through the Design Review Board approval process to get the actual unit approved by the Design Review Board. So if there is a cluster standard, the same rules apply. The application can be reviewed by staff in three to five days. If there is no cluster standard, or if there's an affected party, or the application deviates from the cluster standard, that application would be reviewed by a panel, which generally can take two to four weeks depending on the process.
And DRB is Design Review Board. That's the parties who enforce, who approve changes to properties in Reston.
That is correct.
And I have a question in the chat. Does Waterview Cluster have an approved guideline for exterior HVAC systems?
Yes, Waterview Cluster and Washington Plaza Cluster both have an existing DRB-approved cluster standard.
Great. Anything else that you can share with people tonight?
Just that, you know, our team is here to support members as they go through the process, whatever process that looks like for each individual member. If it's the covenants committee going, going through the medical exemption route, we are receiving those on a daily basis. We have received probably ten in the last month. And we continue to have those reviewed at the next available covenants committee. So those are still an opportunity if there is a valid medical exemption. Please feel free to reach out to our team. We're happy to kind of answer some questions relative to that process. And then, of course, the Design Review Board process, we are actively working to look to see how we can support the clusters as they go through and establish a cluster standard or individually homeowners that are going through to submit an application if there is no cluster standard currently.
All right, Peter Luss, do you want to pick it up from there?
Sure, thanks, John. There were a few points that we would like to make, you know, following the hearing last Monday, and we've received some questions since then too. So just as a quick introduction, if I don't know you on the call, my name is Peter Luss. I'm the chief operating officer here with RA. It's been great to get to know most of you through this process. We've been in communication with lots of members throughout this process. So I just want to touch base on a few items, and we can turn it back over for public comment. First, just some history on the referendum. This referendum has happened twice before, failing both times. So if you're new to RA, you weren't around for the first two, that might be news to you. That one is not included on our website FAQ, so that was something that we wanted to share today, just to kind of hit some of our kind of frequently asked questions as we've gone throughout this process. Why are we doing a referendum? Why is this happening? Mr. Farrell touched on this early in his remarks, but when the board was made aware of the decision of for RELAC not to operate in two thousand and twenty-four, they used the tool that was available to them at that time, which was to authorize a referendum for folks that are served by the system to potentially have a choice. So that's how we, that's how we got to this place. What have we done since from a staff perspective? Since, since learning of the news, we've done everything that we can to try to push out as much information as we had as we were learning. One of those steps was to publish an FAQ on our webpage. I know many of you have visited. We've tried to keep that updated and have updated the date as we make updates so that people are aware when new information is posted. We've hosted meetings with cluster presidents. I've done my best to stay in touch with cluster presidents. We've also been responding to many, many emails and questions as they come in through various channels. So from a staff perspective, we've been trying to push information out so people know from an RA perspective, what's going on and what the truth is. One of the main questions we've been getting that we've actually posted to our FAQ that was a follow-up from last week was the number of eligible voters and what is a two-thirds vote? We established at the last public hearing that it did require a two-thirds vote. That information was posted on our FAQ. But we've now posted that there are three hundred and forty-three eligible units, and that's, that requires two hundred and twenty-eight voters for a two-thirds vote. So again, that information is on our webpage, and we have sent that out in various emails today to respond to some questions that came in over the weekend. One other, and then I'll wrap up and we can pass it on, but one question that continues to come up is what happens if someone chooses not to vote? That vote counts as a no vote. So just from a referendum perspective, from a numbers perspective, that's a bit of an overview. Again, as Cam mentioned, I'm around. I've been in contact with many of you. If you have additional questions, happy to, happy to take a call or email. I'll put my email in the chat, but I'll turn it back over to Mr. Farrell.
And our CEO, Matt Cummins, did you have something to offer to the membership before we proceed with the rest of the questions?
Yeah, I think I'll just offer some, some general comments. I think Peter hit most of the high points. From our perspective, the entire effort here was about having choice. And when the news first came in that RELAC was not going to operate in two thousand and twenty-four, that left a number of our members without choice, even though RA is not responsible for operating a utility out there. But everyone's aware of the deed and the covenant restriction hooking up to a cooling system, not necessarily RELAC as that system. So this was the tool available to us. Having that choice has always been the most important thing from our perspective moving forward. So I think Peter did a very good job about what the referendum is about, and I'm happy to answer any questions as we get through all this tonight as well.
And just to clarify before we return to public comment, there, there are two condominiums that are not subject to the deed. The deed is specific to clusters. So the Lake Anne, commonly referred to as Larka, is not subject to that restrictive covenant, nor is Vantage Hill. Both of those organizations are free and have been free at any time to go off the RELAC system and to provide air conditioning directly themselves. So that's why when you hear association personnel, including myself, refer to this, this referendum as only applying to those six clusters is because only those six clusters are bound by the current covenant. With that, let me move on to the next person who signed up to speak, Brittany.
Thank you. Anthony Iani.
If you can unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Anthony Iani. I have resided at eighteen fifty-five Wainwright Drive, Governor Square Cluster for forty years. I've actually been in Reston for fifty-three. And I do appreciate the opportunity to address the referendum to remove the covenant requiring us to use the existing air cooling system. I'd like to ask the Board of Directors to defer the referendum vote so that our entire community is able to make the most intelligent decision possible about our future, rather than do away with some of the important features of that covenant out of fear, conflicting information, and the obvious short timeframes. And also, not all of our impacted residents can even vote on the referendum, which you just referred to, which, while I understand there's covenants covering who's on it and who's not, that seems rather unfair because they're rather impacted. And so ensure that we just need to all work together, collaborate as a community. And I think where I'm really coming from here is, is why do we have covenants in the first place? And I thought the rationale for the, the referendum is, wasn't really valid because we do have the possibility of a system operating in the future. I understand you responded to the email that came out, but we've been told that there's a co-op that will be providing that. We have emails saying that there will be an operational system. So it seems premature to put that in place when we have to ask for a vote, when we have to make decisions based on, and costly ones, based on what we can and can't do. And again, the covenants are there to help ensure that all of our properties retain their beauty, you know, to help support our Reston community, and that's all maintained. And I think that should be the first thing that we focus on, rather than just is there an existing system or not? There may be various ways to maintain or get that existing system. And any alternative, whether it's the co-op, whether it's something else, all of them have costs associated with it. And those of us who have to replace our current system with a personal air conditioning system are having to address unplanned costs of replacing that system immediately. And the fact of the matter is, is our homes weren't designed for these external systems. And we've, we've asked for several vendors to come in and give us some appraisals. We've gotten some conflicting information. Clearly, one issue is, is our electric panels probably have to be addressed. Vending may or may not be appropriate or not, so the cost is more significant than just the cost of the system itself. The other thing is, is that-
If you can wrap up your comments, you've had three minutes.
Okay, the other thing is that I think one of the things we need to remember is our community and our environment is really the opportunity to not have a very noisy set of external systems. We do enjoy the fact that we have a nice private or a nice quiet-
Mr. Iani, we have a long list of people, and you've gone over thirty seconds. Thank you, sir. Who's next?
All right, next we have Daniel Velez and Parker Gallagher. Ask me to unmute, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Gallagher. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, COO, Luss, officers, members of the Reston Association Board. I don't believe Supervisor Alcorn's with us, but if he is, and hardworking RA staff, Parker Gallagher and Daniel Velez, one one six two five Vantage Hill Road in Reston. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, which we are doing as residents of Vantage Hill. I believe that there are board members of the Vantage Hill Board who will be speaking as well. So I appreciate your interest in helping those of us facing the loss of RELAC in an uncertain future without air conditioning this summer. I also thank you for your patience with the emotion that comes out of this uncertainty and fear. From a resident's perspective, I support the concept to exempt the developer of our pool property from mandatory use of RELAC. As I mentioned in my remarks last week, the positive financial benefit will go directly to benefit a hundred and fifty-two of your neighbors, residents of Reston. Those funds will be used to fix our failing infrastructure, which now urgently includes upgrading our sixty-amp electrical service. Thank you for confirming for us that we are not required to be on RELAC, but we are on it and we are captive to it until we can upgrade our electrical infrastructure. Exempting the developer will help support us. If the referendum fails and there is no alternative to RELAC and the RELAC co-op cannot raise the funds to restart, please consider some kind of backstop or other assistance so that we will not be without chilling this summer. The most recently posted figures from the co-op on February eighth show that Vantage Hill is the only non-variable group in the analysis. This reflects our reality that we currently have no alternative we can deploy across every condo by June one and thus are entirely captive. The worst-case number is that each Vantage Hill household will have to soon come up with two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. There are many Vantage Hill residents who are retired on fixed incomes for whom this may not be possible, particularly suddenly. In that worst-case scenario, Vantage Hill will be forty-four percent of the properties responsible for four hundred and four thousand of the nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars the co-op is projecting will be required to restart. Please consider how creatively Reston Association might be able to help if the co-op cannot raise the funds and cannot restart. Compared to our completely volunteer Reston, I'm sorry, Vantage Hill Association Board, Reston Association has many resources, paid staff, finance, you own and run facilities, you've got maintenance, legal, deep contacts. Please consider finding creative ways to marshal your resources and our need for short-term by this summer and longer-term solutions. As residents, we are grateful for any lobbying efforts you can make on our behalf that will help us, like with Dominion. Thank you for your considerations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you staying within the timeframe. Next, Brittany.
Next, we have Leslie Needs. I've asked you to unmute. Leslie, if you're on the call this evening, please raise your hand. Moving on, we have Peter Song.
You can unmute yourself, sir. You'll have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, my name's Peter Song. I reside at one one five one five Maple Ridge Road. Full disclosure, I'm strongly in favor of keeping RELAC running as a cooperative. I think that having the vote on RELAC now is a bad idea. If it goes against RELAC, it will mean several hundred households scrambling around for new AC service in the two months before the hot weather arrives. If it could somehow be postponed until next fall, it would give the new RELAC co-op a chance to get off the ground and to show us what kind of service they could give us over the summer. It would give the clusters involved more time to come up with sensible regulations for installing new AC units if that became necessary. So far, we've heard nothing from our own Hickory Cluster about what those regulations will be. It would also give households a real idea of how well the new co-op would function. It would also give households a real idea of how well the new co-op would function. And it would give everybody more time to understand how much individual units would cost to install and operate. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Who do we have next?
Next, we have Victor Gallo. I don't see him on the call this evening. Susan Dusay. Do not see her on the call this evening. Steve Julius. I've asked you to unmute.
Hello, this is Steve Julius. I live at 11600 Vantage Hill, Unit C. I'm, just like any other Vantage Hill resident on this call, you know, extremely concerned about the future of RELAC, the future of what will happen if, you know, there's issues with RELAC and our options. You know, I feel like somebody that's been held captive by RELAC living here. And again, as also lifelong resident, I'm just very concerned. I would expect the Reston Association to be able to step in and assist. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Next, we have Anna Flores. Anna, if you're on the call, please raise your hand. Followed by Kathy Griffith. No, see her on the call. I do have someone with their hand raised, though.
Have we finished with everybody who signed up in advance?
Not yet.
Let's finish with them first and then we'll take everybody who's raised their hands this evening.
Okay. Stormy and Carlotta Singer. Not seeing them on the call this evening. Jeanne Dauphine. Okay, I've asked you to unmute. Jeanne, I've asked you to unmute.
Hello, this is Jeanne Dauphine, 11617 Vantage Hill Road, Apartment B-Like Boy 21. I appreciate the ability to speak briefly tonight about not having another viable air conditioning option for us at Vantage Hill for the summer. And we understand that RELAC is anticipating coming back into operation, but I'm here to ask if the association can consider any support that they might be able to give us as we transition or if it's determined that we can transition to a different type of cooling because currently not all of our residents can afford to make an individual unit viable and our electrical system does not allow it to operate. So that would leave us without air conditioning. If there's any support that the Reston Association can provide us, would really be appreciative of the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Bonnie R. Allen. Please unmute.
Excuse me, I live in Vantage Hill, 11623 Apartment 12C. And many of my questions have been answered tonight. I do think it seems like a good idea to postpone the referendum until fall or later. That makes sense to me. I, is it for certain that RELAC will be operating this summer? Is there, is there any question about that or who could tell me? Is that a certainty that they're operating this summer?
Ma'am, all I can tell you is that we have an email from, two emails from Mr. Adele, who is the, one of the three owners of RELAC LLC, in which he has confirmed that they will be operating in 2024. That's all we know.
Okay, well, that's reassuring. Otherwise, I think I'll try to speak more with Parker. It was good to hear his summary of the situation. I was thinking that this meeting didn't have much to do with me as a Vantage Hill resident, but I've learned a lot from the people who've spoken. So I have no more questions right now. Thanks for all your work on this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next, Brittany?
Chris Miller. Asked you to unmute.
Hello, this is Chris Miller, 11627 Vantage Hill Road, Unit 11B. Can you hear me okay?
Hear you fine.
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board. Thank you so much for allowing us to express some concerns. I've been following the situation very closely and as a unit owner here, I can't help but agree a hundred percent with Mr. Gallagher's comments earlier. I would just urge the Board to sort of rethink what it means to provide assistance to a community. I get that the initiative referendum is underway, but there are other things you can do if we all get creative about what some of the options are. You have access to resources we don't have, you know people we don't know. If there's anybody at the state of Virginia we need to speak to, please, by all means, point us the way. I'm not necessarily asking for financial assistance, but we can get creative. I think Vantage Hill has the, certainly has the ability to cover air conditioning costs on a short or a long-term basis, but the disruption that's going on here in the community is immense. I mean, our condos right now are worth nothing. I don't know who's going to buy until the situation is resolved. So we've got short-term issues to deal with over the summer as well as a long-term possibility. We, you know, if we get the check from our property owner here, we're looking at spending the vast majority of that money solely on electrical upgrades to allow either a potential future solution, either at the unit level or at the building level, to get installed. So it is creating an amazing amount of sort of tension and frustration in the community. The last thing I'd like to request from the Board is, could someone please follow up with whoever sent you those two emails urgently and get some clarification as to what they mean? It would be fantastic if they're going to continue to operate this summer. That'll give us the breathing space that we need to plan for a longer-term solution, either with or without RELAC. Thank you very much.
Just to give you some comfort, we'll post both of those emails up on our website under the FAQ, so you can see what we see. Next question. Next, you strike that. Next speaker, sorry. Next speaker.
Yeni Nishku does not appear to be on the call this evening. I've got David Sebo. I've asked you to unmute.
Thank you. I don't have much to comment other than I also live in Vantage Hill and am very concerned about the situation. Would like to see the Reston Association step in more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's next, Brittany? Brittany, are you there?
Lizanne, I've asked you to unmute.
Yes, I'm unmuted. Thank you so much. I have lived in Reston for fifty-seven years. It concerns me that RELAC is fifty-nine years old and continues to use Freon. RA needs to let individual units install their own AC units. We do not have a commitment that is valid that we will have air conditioning in 2004, and that's an issue. And RA has not been enforcing the rule where people have had medical exemptions and installed their own AC units to have them taken out when they resell their houses. So I have a great issue with why RA is now deciding they're going to enforce that. This presents a real deterrent for anyone to buy property in these affected areas. And I would like to agree with people who have stated we need to move this vote until the fall. It is not appropriate at this time. It has been too much of a short notice. And this is a real crisis in Reston. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Who is next on our list, Brittany?
Cassandra Anglam. I've asked you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Cassandra Anglam. I'm at 11601 Vantage Hill Road. Once again, I'm back. I just want to say that I have lived in Reston for ten-plus years. I pay my dues each and every year. I have a voice, so I'm using it despite being told that I have no say in what's going on, although I am fifty percent of the people who rely on RELAC. The last three meetings I've attended, you've opened with the statement of no strings, no ties, we are not RELAC, they're two separate entities. However, despite that statement, your own attorney said their stance on the new townhomes that would come on the Vantage Hill property would be they must use RELAC. To me, this implies there is a direct relationship between you, somehow, some way. You're asking people to vote without a fair and accurate information that can jeopardize their health and well-being. The co-op once again sent an email out on February eighth regarding ownership cost in our scenario that includes Vantage Hill. As far as I know, Vantage Hill cannot be part of that co-op. We'd love to be a consumer, but I don't think we can be a co-op. Therefore, those numbers change significantly. I also understand that people don't understand what the impact is on having air conditioning units installed due to the availability and supply chain demands. People may be approved but may not have access to them. Last meeting, Walter Alcorn mentioned that Dominion Power felt they could support our power needs but wasn't entirely certain what they will need to do, whether it was a new transformer or not. I'm wondering if that has been clarified, if there's any updates, and if so, what the timeline on that is going to be. Reston Association dues are up roughly ten percent, which are already inequitable and now are only further benefiting the larger households despite the substantial increase in revenue, which I think is north of a million because I couldn't find the Pool Pass fee revenue for last year. We need time. We need you guys to give us time. We need you to find a bridge for us to get over this gap. We need to be able to educate ourselves. We need some help. We need resources and people's livelihood. Their health and well-being need to be thought of before capital improvements. So I ask you again to use some of this money that we're all paying for the Reston Association dues that are up fifty-four dollars this year to help us find a way and bridge the gap to ensure that RELAC is up and running the summer season so we can properly wean off the system that's failing. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next on our list, Brittany?
Alexander Walcott.
Hi. Good evening. Oops, sorry.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Perfect. Good afternoon. My name's Alexander Walcott. I live at 11603 at Vantage Hill here in Reston. Want to thank the Board for the opportunity to speak today. So today I'd like to discuss Reston and the RELAC system. Though I've only lived in Reston about eight years now, I've grown to admire living in a town that wears its core values on its sleeve, a model community where all can live, work, play, and get involved. The Reston Association exists to preserve and enhance the Reston community through outstanding leadership, service, and stewardship of our resources. They also have further goals of engaging diverse groups of the community, working to avoid material and financial waste, and maintaining the quality of our natural resources, and to preserve the character of our built environment, something we're very, very familiar with here in Old Reston. I know I've seen the DRB personally vehemently defend Old Reston's character because that is what, you know, RA believes is important. It's fantastic. I enjoy living here. But with all those values in mind, I'd ask that the Reston Association do all that they can to assist with the current RELAC issue. I would hope that they would help as much as they can to help RELAC continue operations over the next year so we can, as many have said before me, bridge this gap. Now, RELAC is a system that owes its existence to the Reston Association due to this mandate that is being voted on in the near term. It feels only right, really, that Reston Association help ease the burden of the sudden loss of this mandated utility. Regardless of the outcome of this referendum, many communities and individuals are just simply not prepared to make the switch. Communities like ours need time to upgrade our infrastructure. Individuals need time to come up with the money, whether it be a loan or some other form, to just pay for their individual HVAC systems. And realistically, from what I've seen from emails coming from the co-op, the financial cost of keeping RELAC going for just one more year is less than what the RELAC-serve community pays to Reston Association every single year. Without RELAC, many of our older residents may be forced to move out, if only for a short period, just to survive the heat. And these are all the people that have been here the longest, the old part of Old Reston. So I just hope that Reston Association is willing to do anything and everything to help keep RELAC moving for just one more year. Thank you.
Brittany, who's next?
Our last speaker who has signed up this evening is Simon McCall. And you've been unmuted, Simon. You state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Simon McCall. I live at 11500 Hickory Cluster. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Oh, good. I would like to cede my time to anybody else from Vantage Hill that either hasn't spoken or doesn't feel as though they had enough time. Thank you.
Mr. McCall, everybody who has their hand raised or who sought to speak will be allowed to speak, so your generous offer is really not necessary. If you have anything further you'd like to say, please go ahead and say it now so we can move on to the other speakers.
Okay, well, I'll just finish up by saying thank you, Mr. Farrell. Perhaps you might respond to my email from last week tomorrow, when you get a chance, asking for a meeting with you. But anyway, to all those listening, and you know that I'm involved with the RELAC co-op initiative. We will be making an announcement tomorrow. As we mentioned previously, we have listened to all of the feedback that we've had from the information we sent out, the financial information we sent out. And we will be making another announcement tomorrow, which I believe will be well-received. Thank you for your time.
Mr. McCall, I'll tell you that I have not seen an email from you. Obviously, I'm happy to meet with any member of the Association, so.
Well, that's very kind of you. I was suggested by Peter Lust, your COO, and Erwin Flashman, one of your directors, to contact you, which I did last Monday, to your personal email address, which I believe was John Farrell or John- address, which I believe was John Farrell, John Five, and that was given to me by one of your connections. So I'll resend it to you tomorrow, Mr. Farrell, and perhaps we can set up a meeting for later on this week. That'd be good.
Happy to do that, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No worries.
Okay, good night.
My direct email for anybody who's on it is on the website, on the RA website. So if someone wants to get in touch, happy to speak with them. I see Brittany has her hand up.
Yes, I have one more person who had signed up, Mr. Jeff Crowe, who is on the...
Mr. Crowe. Go ahead. So you have...
Okay, my name is Jeff Crowe. My parents moved myself and my siblings to Reston in 1972, and I've owned the property at 11493 Waterview Cluster since 1999. I did have a few asks for Reston Association, and let me find my notes, sorry. The first is, many people keep discussing this referendum issue as though a successful referendum will mean that members have to get a new AC unit. This is simply false, and I wish that Reston would publish that in bold in its FAQ on the website. A successful referendum will only mean that those people who are currently compelled to be on the system, who are Class A members, will no longer be so. Anyone else wishing to stay on the system will be able to do so, and Reston could do a lot more to make that fact clear. The other thing is, any surprise that this antiquated system is failing and the people who are running it are unable to make it viable shouldn't surprise anyone. The system's been crumbling for decades, and that's the reason there have been referendums in the past to try to fix it. They've been saying they're going to fix it for at least 30 years and probably longer than that. And the biggest problem with the system is that for many people, but not all, it simply doesn't work. So I would ask Reston to also reconsider what it thinks "available" means, because there's a lot of focus on that second part of the sentence in Section 15 that says, "may not use individual AC units," but very little attention paid to the word "available." What does "available" mean? If there's a broken pipe that means that the water doesn't flow to my particular house, so I can't get cooling for a particular season, service is not available to me. And the State Corporation Commission does not enforce any kind of service standard. So what does "available" mean? If I put an AC unit in, an individual unit in, because service isn't available to me because there's a broken pipe, and then the next day, RELAC comes in and digs up the pipe and fixes it, do I have to take my AC unit out then? Is that how the covenant should work? So I want Reston to pay a little bit more careful attention to what "available" means, because a couple hundred thousand dollars here or there that they're trying to raise is not going to fix this system, and kicking the can down the road is just going to make it worse, and it's going to cost more. If we allow some people, those who are currently compelled to stay on the system, to get off by choice and allow the other people to stay on by choice, they will probably get better service. And then we can still... The bridge is already there. My point is that the bridge is already there. RELAC doesn't have to go away just because some people can choose not to use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. I see that Susan Geis, who had signed up earlier, has joined us. Miss Geis, you can unmute yourself?
I don't see her name in the chat, John.
Mr. Gallagher says she's on.
Is that Sue?
Susan Geis?
Or Suzie?
Suzie, I've...
She does not have her first and last name listed. She'll have to provide Brittany with what the name listed on her machine is.
Yes, I was unmuted. This is Parker Gallagher, Vantage Hill Road, in a separate message thread I have with her. I think she's on the call as iPad. That's what she texted me in a separate thread. Is there an iPad ID on the call? Over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Susan, you've been asked to unmute. iPad 7?
Brittany, someone mentioned Suzie is her name. There's a Suzie.
iPad 7 is Fred. It's not who you're looking for.
Suzie, you've been asked to unmute? I've tried both of the iPad and Suzie, and neither of them are unmuting at this time.
All right. Well, if Miss Geis appears, we'll give her a chance to speak. The next person, is there anybody else who's listed who signed up in advance, Brittany?
That's all for this evening.
Okay, then the next one I had had 272564.
272564. Please state your name. You've been asked to unmute. Your name and your address.
I think it's me. I think it's Susan Geisy. I don't know that number, but I'm here now.
For mispronouncing your last name, ma'am. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
I don't even remember what I was going to say now. I'm so rattled by the muting situation. Okay, I'm Susan Geisy, and I live at 11615 Vantage Hill Road. I am the president of the board, but I am not speaking on behalf of the board as they don't know my comments. But I am going to repeat a lot of the same things that other Vantage Hill members have said, just a different way. My community is 152 condominiums, and we do not get a vote in this referendum. And despite being equally impacted by the withdrawal of the RELAC service, I'd like to get an understanding as to why condominiums are differentiated from townhomes, because we have the same RELAC system around our property, and, you know, we have been using it since the 60s. But the dangers of the life-threatening heat is equal opportunity, just not our vote. And I can speak about this because my folks used to live here. And in the early 2000s, when there was a breakdown of RELAC, I was in a board meeting, actually, and they came and got me because my father collapsed from heat stroke and had to be taken to the hospital. So I can tell you, these units become very hot very quickly, and the ventilation is not adequate to keep the heat out. So anyway, going forward, in that case, we put in a application to RA for a medical waiver. We got it. We put it in an air conditioning box. So they had then one room that was a safety place for them to go should this happen again, but just one room in a three-bedroom unit. We have, as a community, today's challenge is 152 units that would each need a window box just to give them one room for a safety zone if we don't have a temporary use of RELAC. And that isn't even viable because our electrical system cannot sustain that draw of air conditioning boxes. We must first rewire our entire community, which at this time, we're pulling in all kinds of electrical engineers and HVAC experts to find out what we have to do to get up and running and how much the associated costs there are. There's no doubt, it's well over a million for just the electrical. So we're trying to put all this into place quickly, as we are also trying to get... Three minutes are up. So I don't want to go on about this. I was just to end with, please consider some means of helping us fund to be able to put these things in place as quickly as possible. If there is any possible way RA could subsidize loans or whatever, low interest rate, long-term, it would be much appreciated, and we will do what we can. I would also like to ask of you to send us the approved HVAC systems that you guys have come up with that have been offered to the clusters that but not offered to Vantage Hill.
Thank you, ma'am. The next name I have is Katie Maines. Is that right? Did I pronounce that correctly?
John, while they're unmuting, Peter or Mac, would you be able to have, Mac, would you be able to have Kim send a request to Miss Geis? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Jessack. Miss Maines, you're here. You have your hand raised.
Hi, yes. My name's Katie Manus. It looks like Maines. I'm a member of Vantage Hill Community. I'm at 11611 Vantage Hill Road, Unit 21B. I'm coming here for the same reason a lot of people are coming here, just to ask that if there's, you know, any opportunity that the RA has to help us, that you please take it and please help us. You know, I've got, just to like add some personal stuff to the mix, like I've got two cats, you know, like if there's not going to be air conditioning, like I have to figure out something so that, you know, these cute little furry creatures are going to be okay. I also have medications that need to be kept within certain temperature ranges that can't go in the fridge for, like they're allowed excursions. They're not allowed whole summers without air conditioning. Then also, there was, when we had one of our outages this past summer with RELAC, I have like a little air temperature temp gun reader. I actually, I was able to get my unit to not be quite as bad as some of the others, because I could see that the air coming into my unit was warmer than my unit and warmer than outside. It was, so I, you know, I just turned it off. So I, there was another one of my neighbors who's a little bit older. Their unit was like 85, 87 when I, like by the evening or afternoon. So it was like later in the day. So theirs had stayed on because, and it kept just blowing all that warm air. So I just, yeah, I just want to add some personal stories to the mix and just kind of ask, you know, where people on the other end of this? And as members of the community, I just want to ask, you know, if there's any opportunity that arises that you guys can help us in any way, please, please, please do so. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person I have listed, it says Hickory Cluster Association. I'm not sure who's speaking for the association, but they will have five minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Merrill. I live at 11541 Hickory Cluster, and I'm the current board president of Hickory Cluster. I appreciate RA holding these hearings so that I could get a sense of what other viewpoints are regarding the referendum. And the one thing that struck me last week and this week as well is that the referendum doesn't, it was interchange with RELAC, but one has nothing to do with the other. What this referendum is about is to give and provide people a choice as to what system works best for them. So voting no on the referendum is going to chain us to this stated covenant that just binds us to only one choice. Voting yes to the referendum will provide other choices. I know people think having a covenant will help us with landscaping and noise, but that's within the standards that the clusters create, and RA approves or helps us with that, which they are doing. The vote is not about pro or against RELAC, and that's the other sense I get. It's a vote for homeowners to be able to make a choice within the clusters so that they can have free range and feel more comfortable with that. Keeping the covenant doesn't provide any benefits to the clusters, as we've witnessed ourselves after December 11th, when we received that email from Mark Waddell. We were all scrambling to find out answers, and there really wasn't an ability to provide or receive any answers because there's not oversight, RELAC oversights itself. So the covenant doesn't ensure any protection in that regard. So feeling bound to this doesn't seem to help us in any way. So if you vote yes on the referendum so that others can participate in RELAC, Simon said there was 72% of the people who are interested in RELAC, they can go then to RELAC. But those that don't feel comfortable with a system like the RELAC system and want to have more choice, they should be free to do so. Thank you for my time. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. The next person on the list is San Giney or Sangain?
Sanjean.
Okay. S-A-N-G-I-N-E.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for letting us speak. As I said, I was not, so my main concern is I wasn't aware of even this issue. So I never, I am in, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Scott, Sanjean, 11447 Waterview Cluster. I never got notification in December, and I was actually looking for pool passes, and this issue popped up. So I'm concerned, number one, did all of the members that are affected actually get the notification? Do they know about the vote? So that's my number one. I emailed our cluster president and did not hear back. So that's my number one. Number two is I agree that this referendum allows choices, and I've owned for over 20 years in Waterview Cluster, and there had been multiple times where the system has failed, and it's not healthy. I had babies. I mean, it was, it's really unfortunate. I've reached out to RELAC. I'm a chemical engineer. I actually worked on cooling towers, and I actually reached out, talked with the RELAC guys about some of the engineering flaws of the system. And so moving forward, really, the system is not technically viable. It was built at a time when there was a different climate environment. Cooling towers completely depend on the atmospheric conditions, your amount of humidity, your temperature, and the way that our temperature patterns have been. It's really, the equipment can't do the cooling as designed because the atmospheric conditions aren't there. So I just want to, you know, kind of iterate. I hope that some good technical engineering firms are being involved, and whether this is actually feasible because of the depth of the lake has gotten shorter. You don't have the cooler temperatures at the bottom of the lake that are needed to have the water come through the cooling tower and actually provide the cooling. So I'm concerned from a technical standpoint and from an outreach standpoint that maybe not all owners are aware of the vote. And I do agree that the referendum vote doesn't prohibit anybody from making their choice, and I think it would be good for people to have a choice. So that's it. Thank you.
So for clarity's sake, let me be clear that when the referendum, if it's authorized, it would go out to all members, 343 members who can, who are eligible to vote, and they will get a package in the mail from the association that will describe the nature of the referendum to them. So I'm sorry that you didn't receive the December letter, but all the members will receive a package from the association that describes the vote. With that, let me move on to Craig. It's your turn. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you. Craig Palmer, 1686 Chimney House Road, Washington Plaza Cluster Association. We do have a standard. You've heard a number of requests tonight to either delay or postpone the referendum. I'm not staking a position on that, but what I am staking a position on is your communication. but what I am staking a position on is your communication about those requests. Let us know as soon as possible what your response is to those requests to delay or postpone the referendum. And and referring to your recent comment that if the referendum is authorized, I thought it was authorized. So so there seemed to be some hesitancy of Mr. Farrell on on your part about the status of the referendum. Uh, and lastly, my, the communications issue is a real concern for me and and uh, I've been in constant email communication since day one of this problem with with very little information feedback. Um, and I was chagrined to learn from this hearing that there was in fact a February fifth public hearing. I heard nothing about it and I have asked repeatedly for communications on on this issue and and received no notice that there was in fact a pub- a February fifth public hearing. So I I'm really concerned about the communications that's going on here and I would ask you to improve the communications and let us know as soon as possible about your decisions about the referendum. And thank you for hearing me.
Let me, I need to clarify something that Director Perry pointed out. The December eleventh letter did not come from Reston Association. It came from the owners of Relac. Um, so if one of the prior speakers didn't get a copy of that letter from Relac, um, I, the association doesn't have anything to do with that communication.
No, I did get that letter.
I I understand, sir. I was speaking to one of your predecessors. Um, the other part of it is, uh, this process that we go through with the referendum is after the public hearing, the board votes whether in fact to send out the referendum. So we started the process and then we've actually made the decision to send out the referendum package after the public hearing is concluded this evening. So there, I I wasn't trying to prejudice what the full board will decide to do. Uh, that that final vote comes after the public hearing is is uh, closed. So I hope that clarifies that for you. Um, the next person who has their hand up is Leslie.
Hi, uh.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
They're currently muted.
Leslie, you need to unmute yourself.
Hi, hi, yes, Andy Freigley, Leslie's husband. I spoke at the last um, public hearing. I will say it's interesting. At that time I stated because the service was unavailable, that RA had no um, basis for enforcing the covenant. I look forward to seeing Mark Waddell's letter tomorrow because if he indeed does say the service will be available, then my, my point is mute because the basic thing was it has to be available in order for the covenant to be enforced. So um, I'll state that um, I'll retract that once it's actually available. The second thing I'll say is that though, I do have concern about the overall covenant because um, about this availability issues. And my concern is related to this. It at some point this summer, after the start of the cooling season, the service becomes unavailable again. What will RA do about stopping to enforce the covenant? Do you have a plan for that? To enable people to make the reasonable choice to get their own air conditioning? They actually can't, the service is not available. That's, that's, that's it. That's all I'm asking at this point.
Thank you.
Can I ask you to give, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your full name other than Leslie's husband?
Andrew Freigley. F R E G L Y. And so so I'm a real stickler for sticking by what's actually written. Covenant is two sentences. The first sentence says it can be enforced if the service is available at the lot line. And the stickler is if it's not available at the lot line, covenant cannot be enforced. It's black and white. That's what the covenant says. So if Mark Waddell's saying it's available, then the covenant can be enforced. If it stops being available, covenant can't be enforced. So I want to know what RA will do if it stops becoming available again.
Thank you, sir. Um, the last person with their hand up is Tim McGuckin.
John, can can we ask staff if they have an answer? To make sure we try to answer all of the questions and if we can't, that's fine, but I'd like to be able to try.
Do do Cam or Peter, do you or Mac, do we have an answer for what happens if the system goes down during the during the heating season?
I think, I think, John, it might be best. I've been in touch um with Leslie through email a couple of times. I think it might be best to have that conversation there. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we have a direct answer for that question.
That's fine. Understood. Um, Mr. McGuckin, you're the last person who had their hand raised. You want to be heard?
He's unmuted. Mr. McGuckin, you're unmuted. Mr. McGuckin, you've been unmuted. I'm not getting any response.
Can you, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I am so sorry for the delay. It was one of those things that was trying to decide whether it was my computer speaker or a headphone. My bad.
You're fine. Please go ahead.
Guys, I'm not going to speak for five minutes because I'm realizing I don't have a consensus in my community. So I'm the president of the Governor's Square Clusters Association. I live at eighteen thirty-three Wing Right Drive. So I'll just try to take about three minutes here. Uh, first, I want to commend the uh, the Board of Directors and I think the Reston Association for, I think, doing a pretty good job getting the information out. Um, I I know that a lot of folks that were commenting, I didn't hear this, I didn't hear that. My my opinion is it's a two-way street. Um, it's really hard to, you have to come to the information as well as, you know, you have to seek it yourself. So I think there's been a lot of good information out there from the Reston Association regarding what its responsibilities are and what its limitations are. Um, the the fact uh, page is pretty good. Um, my comment is, I just have a couple of comments that now all of a sudden, after dire situations that were explained by Mr. Wildell, that the situation is unsolvable and I'm walking away, those have suddenly changed. And now we have Relac again for twenty twenty-four. I think it would be silly to buy that argument. What has changed except maybe some pressure uh, on him to keep the situat- the system running? Um, I'm just not certain that I could have faith in that. Um, I don't understand how changing the form of the operating entity from a LLC to a co-op would change anything, any of the inherent inherent issues with the system. Um, so I, what I try to do is give information to my cluster to help them make an informed decision. And I have to say from the operator of Relac, uh, I don't feel very confident that we're getting the best information, nor do I feel confident that I would want to place my faith in that organization uh, based on how it acted in December and now how it is suddenly now viable again. Um, so that's just, again, the the cluster here at Governor's Square, they're split. Um, I think one of the things is we all didn't want this issue. Um, we all have sympathy for the entities, Vantage Hill particularly and and um, LARCA that that have such acute needs and system, system, uh, you know, limitations that they might be facing huge assessments to to uh, to repair the system. I was um, um, happy to hear that at least Vantage Hill has an opportunity to raise some cash to uh, to address the situation. I really hope that that goes through. But I just had a comment on this new sudden revitalization of of Relac. Um, uh, and I just, sorry, guys, I can't, I can't buy it because she still seems seems to need three to nine hundred thousand dollars for this, for the system to actually be viable, not including the piping system. Uh, so I, it's been, that's my three minutes. Thank you. Okay, I gave myself three minutes. Thanks a lot, John.
You're welcome. Uh, I have Jenny Rikus, Rakus.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, my name is Jenny Rikus. I'm at one, one, five, three, three Hickory Cluster, uh, in Hickory Cluster um, neighbor, uh, cluster. Uh, two comments. Number one, I personally think that any dollars put towards Relac is a waste at this point and request that we do not delay the referendum. I, today's discussion was the first time I was hearing that that idea and I just wanted to express concern that we should not, I should, we should not delay the referendum. Secondly, should the referendum pass and uh, uh, members start installing their own air conditioning systems and move away from Relac, I'm also concerned about the remaining crumbling infrastructure that lies under the ground outside of our homes and the impact of it not being taken care of and deteriorating and causing further damage to homes as it falls apart. So and I don't know if any RA has any support towards uh, looking into the decommissioning of it and the proper, you know, shutdown, should that happen? But um, that's a concern that I have as I think about the long-term viability of Relac. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Rakus. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard this evening during this public hearing? Any other member? I see Mark Beckett has raised his hand. Mr. Beckett, can you unmute yourself? You'll have three minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, just a quick question. Uh, regardless of the outcome of the referendum, uh, does Reston Association have the ability to amend the covenant on its own without uh, the need for a referendum?
The provisions of this particular covenant provide that the um, um, repeal of it is in the hands of the people who are subject to the covenant. That's what the plain language of the covenant says.
And that does that imply, thank you for for answering, for allowing a a quick question. By the way, Mark Beckett, uh, at one, one, five, one, nine Hickory Cluster. I- i- is it possible, conceivable, legal for Reston Association to amend the covenant itself without the referendum? I wasn't sure if I, if you were clear that that it's just not possible. I understand the plain language that currently exists, but is it possible to anyone's knowledge to dispense with the the covenant?
So the covenant is part of the deed that created Reston that we've updated from time to time. And when a larger uh, effort is made to amend covenants, um, that requires the vote of uh, same two-thirds vote and a ten percent quorum. Um, and our council's on the line with us. If I've misstated that, I'm sure you'll correct me in lightning speed. But that would, you'd be talking then about having all twenty-four thousand homes potentially voting on the question. So this this covenant's unique in that it's um, a doc- uh, it wa- it can be repealed by the two-thirds vote of the three hundred and forty-three members. It's a little different from the rest of our documents.
Yeah, okay. Uh, well, again, thank you for entertaining the the brief back and forth. Then if the referendum is solely in the hands of those uh, users of the system, some additional points of clarification and information for anyone considering the referendum uh, being attached to Relac also implies uh, forced attachment to a natural gas heat system, uh, conversion to anything other than Relac would imply conversion to a heat pump, should be an all-electric system. I happen to be in the uh, in the unfortunate position of having a home that also has issues with the uh, gas service to the property. Um, a relatively recent purchaser, although longtime Reston resident, uh, understanding I'm being given by the gas company has had something to do with the deterioration of the gas lines in and about this property. That's just another component to the system that probably should be considered by anyone considering a referendum that attaches you to one half. You're also attached to the gas side as well. So just a point of additional information. Thank you.
Mr. Beckett, I'm sorry. I I need to make something very clear. The the referendum and the covenant provision only reply applies to the chilled water system. Um, the relationship between individual unit owners and the gas company is not covered by uh, uh, this covenant. So just just want that to be absolutely clear.
And that is understood. I was just talking about the physical relationship between the the system, the components of the system.
Thank you, Mr. Beckett.
Thank you.
Uh, I have uh, Leslie's has her hand up.
Yeah, I want to note something. Again, Andrew Freigley of sixteen, nine, six, chimney house. And like I said, I noted that the covenant, the only requirement for this covenant is that it's available for light lot line. All right? But I want to make another point that I made in some emails to RA is that because the only requirement is availability, that creates some potential legal issues because there's no requirement on on what ha- what the term of availability is. Is it one month a year, is it one hour a day? There's no requirement for cost. There's no retroactive comply- requirement. This means that any provider could providing a central air conditioning service to any cluster in Reston could require that cluster to use their service retroactively. This, there, there's no restriction on that. Because the covenant is worded so generally, without any constraints as far as the quality of service, pricing, availability, uh, what, anything with that fits within the term availability. Um, there are precedents that such a covenant can be revoked legally through a court action. I'm just making people aware of that. This is something I'm actually exploring because I think the covenant um, it's got to have further qualification for such a covenant to exist. So I'm just letting people know this is what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freigley. Um, okay, I I, if folks have already had an opportunity to speak, I wanted to make sure everybody else who has already who hasn't spoken, uh, gets a chance to speak before I go give people a second chance. Uh, is there anybody who hasn't spoken who wishes to be heard? Anybody who hasn't spoken who wishes to be heard? Uh, Cheryl Liscelli spoke earlier in the evening. We'll go ahead and give you another chance if you can unmute yourself.
Hi there. Okay, so this is Cheryl. Let's go at eighteen thirty-one Wayne Wright Drive. Um, you know, in December, when many of us received an email saying that Relac, uh, Mark, from Mark Waddell from Reston Relax, saying that they were going to cease to operate, many of us just said, what are we going to do? And we just immediately started to try to figure out what our options were. Reston jumped into action. Um, the co-op jumped into action, but none of us stopped and said, Mark, why are you doing this? Certainly explained in his email why he thought he was doing it. But Mark really should be sat down, asked why he's in this position, why he chose to do it so abruptly and find out if he knew, in my opinion, he should have sought out county, state, and federal resources to provide any necessary funding that he might be needing. And look for resources, ask for their help. He, if he didn't want the actual help, he should have put his pro- his company on the market to sell because right now he's left all these people wondering what to do and going into many different directions. So I have emailed Mark to try to talk to him. Even though the SEC says he should be replying back to me to talk to me, he's not. So it sounded as if um, you have actually talked with Mark Wa- Waddell and maybe it's possible that Reston Association, along with other governing um, groups like Supervisor Alcorn's office, could bring Mark together and find out what he needs, what he um, how can he continue to um, service and make Relac available for some interim time? Um, again, I don't know if anybody has asked him, why did he do this? What does he mean? So if you guys could be a facilitator for that? So if you guys could be a facilitator for that, I think it would be greatly appreciated.
Just to clarify, ma'am, we, we have not had a conversation with Mr. Waddell. We had an exchange of emails with him. And, and those emails will be up on our FAQ.
Okay, um, but at least you've gotten an email back from him. He hasn't replied to an email or a voicemail that I've left. So, um, you know, he should be held responsible in some fashion. Because he's the one who started this. And it's unfortunate that Virginia law doesn't have any law that doesn't allow a single threaded public utility to be able to shut down. So hopefully there'll be legislation put into action so that, that this doesn't happen again for here or anywhere else. But if you could facilitate anything, I think that would be great.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, you have a second? Let me call one more time and see if anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak wishes to speak this evening. Is there anyone else who hasn't had a chance to speak, wish to speak this evening? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Crowe, go ahead.
On mute? Okay, I guess you can hear me now? Oh, I just wanna, I mean, I put some of this in the chat, but, um, the referendum is very unlikely to succeed. There are just, if only a third of people can trap everybody else into having to help them pay for a system that doesn't work, they will. And, um, that's what's happened. The last two times we had a referendum and is likely to happen again. I, just now, while we were having this meeting, came up with an idea for Reston. Um, that could help with the problem of there not being any kind of service standard. And the word available not really meaning anything about the service being provided to any actual functional standard and the SEC, which perhaps is supposed to enforce it, doesn't. Um, and that would be instead of having a medical waiver, have an availability waiver. Where if somebody by some objective standard could establish that the system does not work for them in their home, they could get a waiver because if they can establish that by some objective standard, then the service doesn't count as available to the lot line, since it doesn't work. Just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Mr. Gallagher wants to be heard again. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you very much. My plea is to please have accurate, comprehensive, verifiable information. And my understanding from the two town hall, town, uh, town hall meetings that Simon and the co-op exploratory group were ha- were having was they had an agreement with Relac to basically take it over from the previous ownership. Of course, I'm on their website right now and I can't come up with it. Um, but my understanding, they've, th- th- on their website, they've got their, you know, their articles of incorporation and all the legal stuff that they've been doing recently. Uh, so I'm quite surprised to hear that you, there's communication apparently with the old, the old ownership, um, who I, my understanding from the town hall meetings was that they're not the people who are necessarily in charge right now, that there's a new agreement with the new group. Now, I may have that wrong. But it's super important, I think, given how short time is and how, um, how tense this situation is for those who are affected. That there be truth in numbers and truth in information. And I realize you're just reporting what you're getting and, and thank you for being transparent with us. Um, but I'm, I'm confused by what you're saying of these emails. Thank you for offering to put them up. The other thing is the numbers are the numbers. So according to Simon and his group, after they've done the research, which they promised at the two town halls, is it's gonna take nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to get Relac running again. And so I think there's some information in the post that they can do it with 70 people. And a- again, I, I'm, I'm relying on their numbers, having done the work to do the research of what it's gonna take to get it going again. And what they're modeling is the cost per owner or the per user, maybe is the better term, uh, for getting Relac restarted. And I asked him directly the question at the first town hall, if you don't raise the money, can you restart the system? And his answer to me directly was, no, we cannot restart until we have the money. So just wanted to encourage in this very fluid situation that there be accuracy and information. And I'm grateful for your giving me a second to opportunity to speak. Thank you very much. And again, thank you all for working so hard to try to help us.
So just for clarity's sake, again, the current owner is Relac LLC. Mr. Waddell is the president of that company. At, in the future, it may be another entity. But the reason we reach out to Mr. Waddell is that he's the president of the current owning entity of Relac. Um, and we will, we either ha- have or will shortly put up our email to, uh, our exchange, our email exchange with Mr. Waddell. Um, and I thank you for your thumbs up, Mr. Gallagher. Let me ask again, is there anyone else who wishes to speak during this public hearing? Director Dodd, you have your hand up.
Only because I see in the chat, there were some, uh, posts by Ms. Lizanne Fisher. And I can't tell whether she is asking to be given an opportunity to speak tonight or not. She responded, oh. No, thank you.
No, I'm, I'm not. Thank you very much.
Sure, okay.
Let me ask again, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard during this public hearing? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard during this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, if there are no further members who wish to speak, I hereby close the public hearing. And I need a motion to go.
Motion to go, motion to go into executive session to consult with counsel.
Is there a second? A second by Director Johnson. Uh, is the discussion, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that looks to be unanimous of all those present and voting. Brittany, please take us into executive session. We'll need Mr. Lusk and our CEO and our general counsel in there with us. If there's anybody else that Mr. Cummins believes should be in there with us, maybe Mr. Adams?
Yeah, John, let's go ahead and bring in Cam, too.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in um open session. I need a cleansing motion.
I move that the Resident Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of consult with council were discussed or considered by the board during executive session.
Have a second? Second by Director Dodd. Discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 I believe that's unanimous of all those present and voting. Next, do I have a motion?
I believe that the current referendum question before us reads, do you agree that section six dot two B fifteen air conditioning units presented below should be revoked thereby deleting that section of the rest indeed in its entirety? Question mark? Air conditioning units, and this is the section of the deed that would be on the ballot, air conditioning units in any residential cluster in which central air conditioning services is available to the lot line. No individual air conditioning units of any type shall be permitted. This covenant may only be amended or revoked by at least two thirds vote of the category A members of all residential clusters on the service. The answers that the members would have available to them would be yes or no. And I would move to approve the question as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Patrine and Director Johnson. Discussion? I guess we're ready for a vote. All those in favor will say aye.
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 That appears to be unanimous of all those present and voting. Any other motions?
I have one.
Director Johnson.
Just a moment. Um, I move that the Resident Association Board of Directors direct RA staff to coordinate with the clusters affected by the potential RHELAC air cooling system cessation, utilizing RA resources to assist in lobbying research and identification of practical air cooling solutions, thereby supporting the clusters in navigating and resolving the current air cooling challenges.
Counsel? I'm, 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 I'm a little concerned about the wording. Director Johnson to add, and I see Director, Director Cummins wants to speak on this. Director Johnson, have you shared that motion with counsel?
I have not. I have not.
And can, is it in writing somewhere where he can get at it? Can you forward it to the, all the members of the board and the, and the group at large there?
I can.
Do we have a second?
Do I have a second?
I'm gonna second that.
Second by Director Dodd. Director Cummins, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just think for the board's edification might be helpful to talk about some things that we're already doing. Um, and I think this will fall in line with the spirit and intent of Travis, what you were getting at there. So we have reached out to Fairfax County to speak to them about um, things like permit expediting or exactly how is a historic review board gonna work? You know, if any of the structures would fall within that process within the county. Uh, and our intent was to try to um, take a look at should um, alternate solutions be viable? What is the, what are the procedural and timing requirements therein? So the coordination of our DRB process, any processes at Fairfax County. Um, and we're making some progress on that. And again, this is all only in a scenario where RHELAC um, or a cooling system is not operational at all. Um, we also talked though that a number of the structures, they don't have all the same technical solutions. So I think this was part B of some of the things you were getting at. I know John had offered to reach out to the National Home Builders Association and of course, a number of us have contacts just kind of generally in the industry. So we are working on um, some of that educational background stuff. And we commented on that a little bit and offered to help the cluster presidents when we had our informational meeting with them. Peter can help me out. It was probably a month ago now. So anyways, I just thought it'd be good since we're back in public session, a lot of that's um, we have started a bunch of that work. So it's somewhat ongoing. Um, and as we learn new things, we're passing that along.
Director Perry, you had your hand up.
Um, thank you. I I think that there are pieces that, you know, you know, sharing Walters contact information on the FAQ page, um, sharing the state's information on that FAQ page. I, I have no problem with that. In this particular case, I'm very concerned certainly with the lobbying and research. As we all know, staff is extremely thin on, in various cases anyway, and to ask them be, to become lobbyists and researchers. And you know, I, I was a, yeah, I went to law school and I was a paralegal for over ten years. And that takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And I am very concerned of asking staff to do that because I know what it took as a paralegal.
I, I'm a former director of research and registered lobbyist, so I also know how that works. And um, I, I recognize that uh, you know, this, this is also a really important uh, task that uh, we'd be asking them to take on.
Director, uh, right, that council, general council has his hand up.
Um, would Director Johnson be amicable to removing lobbying and adding um, and striking clusters affected or just put entities affected because there are condominiums that um, you know, are going to be affected by this issue. I don't want the lobbying in there because of our tax exempt status. And so I, I, you know, I have another chance to really look at whether that would fall into the exemption. So at this point, I, I prefer we didn't have that in there.
Yeah, I, I would absolutely be amicable to that.
And I get, is there unanimous consent uh, of the membership to amend the motion as described by counsel?
Yes.
Is there any objection to that? Okay, Britney, Britney, uh, Director Flashman, are you objecting to the amendment?
No, I would like to propose another.
Like to be heard?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I was concerned.
Hang on, Director Flashman, give me a second. Let me just get, procedurally get it squared away. Brittany, do you have the changes that have been unanimously agreed to?
Yes.
Okay, those, the, the motion is amended. Uh, Director Flashman?
I was concerned by the use of the term resources, RA, and to use RA resources. Um, it's a very broad term and one that could include uh, underwriting costs or other kinds of things or expending money on behalf of the condos or the uh, clusters. And I think that is not something that RA is inclined to do, and so I would ask that that word not be used. Um, if it is simply to direct the staff to do some research and uh, um, talking with governmental agencies and others uh, uh, looking for some sort of assistance and advice from other people, uh, that would be fine, but uh, the resources becomes a bit difficult for me.
I'd only push back on that.
Director Johnson, can you let, Director Johnson, can you let, let Director McPhar speak?
Certainly, excuse me.
And I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to be, to respond. Director McPhar? Director McPhar, you need to unmute yourself.
I also would like to comment with, uh, so not to, not to enter. Uh, this, this.
I'd hear you.
You, you need to bring the microphone closer to your mouth because I, I'm not hearing you. Hey, you need to bring the microphone closer to your mouth because I, I'm not hearing you.
Can't hear you at all now.
I'll come back.
Uh, Director Johnson, you wanted to respond to Director Flashman?
I did, thank you. Um, I am fine with making a change to the term resources. However, rather than removing the word, um, perhaps we can um, add a modifier to the term resources so we can be more specific about the kinds of resources where the, we're authorizing the staff to use.
Do you have a suggestion, sir?
Yeah, actually, and in fact, uh, I would say uh, staff resources, uh, staff time and yeah, staff time resources and uh, yeah, that would be fine with me. Staff, staff resources.
It's proposed to amend the motion to uh, insert the word staff before the word, between the words RA and resources. Is there an objection to that amendment?
I, I thought I heard him say staff time.
I did, I, I did, um. Can I ask Director Flashman a direct question?
Go ahead.
Please.
Sure. Um, are you, are you fine with saying um, with staff time?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, then yes, let's change it to uh, staff time, please.
Utilizing RA staff time resources or staff time? I, I need, I need, I need a board liaison to be able to create minutes here.
Yeah. Uh, and I need to sign those minutes. I need to make sure that I'm right here. Um, let's go with staff time. Let's remove resources and go with staff time.
Is there any objection to that amendment? Hearing and seeing none, so ordered. So Brittany, do you have that change? Director McPar, I'll come back to you in a second. Let me make sure we've got our record clear.
Yes, I have the change.
You have the change. All right, Director McPar? Nope.
Brittany, would you mind, would you mind reposting if possible uh, into the chat so that we could just see the amended motion, please?
Director Perry, I see you. Give, give me a second.
It's, Director McPar, can I just provide some guidance that might help?
Please go right ahead on that, on that. Go ahead. Technical advice.
Director McPar, when I have had this issue, I have continued on Zoom, muted the Zoom and called in on the phone. So you would be speaking to us via phone, but we'd still see your face on Zoom.
We're waiting for the revised uh, motion to be posted. Director Cummins, while we're waiting for that to happen, you raise your hand.
Yeah, while, while that's popping up, I think I just want to try to clarify, I mean, a, a number of the things I mentioned we're, we're doing already. And so I'm just, want to make sure I'm clear. If there's a motion, is there a desire to be doing more than what we're currently doing in terms of information flow, research? I mean, Pete, Peter has been spending a lot of time with cluster presidents talking about a bunch of these different issues.
Um, I am actually asking for more of an organization uh, type activities as opposed to just um, you know, being available for, to answer questions, to actively uh, coordinate with uh, the uh, entities to use uh, Tony's word um, that are affected with that to make um, have conversations with the, the folks that they um, that will improve their situation. So for instance, you know, like I said, Walter, uh, any legislators, lechers, you know, legislators. Um, the, the folks who run Relac, things along those lines. So you know, I know, I know staff is doing uh, their level best to respond to questions and they're doing a great job. But um, I'm just really asking them to, to take on more of an organization. Is that clear?
Um, yeah, I follow you. Um, I, I think we're actually doing a lot of that now. Um, we're not hosting community meetings and those sorts of things, but in terms of the communication lines, Peter will have to weigh in because he's handling, you know, all of this, but I can't, innumerable conversations with Relac, um, the co-op folks, you know, about what their intentions are, you know, all those sorts of things. Not as much recently, um, but yeah. So I mean, I think a lot of that's already happening. But uh, I'll let Peter weigh in on some of that too, and just make sure we're all on the same page.
I would just add, Travis, that I think what you're describing is going to be one bucket of work or another bucket of work depending on the outcome of the referendum. Um, we have been, as Max, we've been out there actively working with lots of folks. I know both Mac and John, when they meet with Walter, have brought this up. Uh, we have sort of scaled back our conversations with the co-op just because of some comments that were made the last time we spoke with them. I don't see any issues particularly with the motion. I think we're, we're doing most of it now, but I think uh, if there was a way for us to maybe ramp up the communication with the board, if the board is expecting maybe more um, regular communication, I think we're happy to provide some sort of bulletin or readout on what's going on. Um, so I've, yeah, no issues. I just, we're, we're kind of working through most of this now.
Yeah, between the board and uh, the community at large, I think would be helpful.
Sure.
Um, Brittany has posted the revised motion in the chat. And if you can all look at that, and I see that Director McPar is asking, is there a time limit on this support? I'll pose that question to Director Johnson.
Um, I would only put uh, I would say no. Uh, the time limit is for the length of the uh, situation.
Okay. Director Perry?
Um, Travis, I understand the reasoning there and, and this is for all board members to consider. The, the reality is, is the history of this is that Relac has failed multiple times over the last twenty years. So by not putting a time limit on this, should the referendum fail? Which by the way, is the out that we are offering the membership of here, here you can have a choice of what you do. But by not putting a timeline on it, you're now saying that staff is required to do this potentially for the next thirty, forty, fifty years because there's going to potentially be problems with Relac for an unforeseen amount of time.
I don't see why we shouldn't be helping them for the next thirty, forty, fifty years to, to find a solution at that point.
Well, the solution would be the referendum and therefore they don't, they can make the choice.
Easy, folks, easy. Let's direct the comments to the chair. Let's not get involved in a, in a back and forth. Okay, so let's, let's try and not get into a colloquy here.
Oh, I, I think, I, 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 thank you. Um, in any case, I'm fine with the, the timeframe. And I do think that it should be our responsibility in any case to, to help support our neighbors to um, find solutions to their overall situation. And if that situation is, the solution to that situation is partially the referendum, because I don't see that that's fully the answered by, that the situation is fully answered by the referendum, then um, you know, good. I'm glad.
Uh, Director Flashman, then are we ready for a vote here, folks? It's nine oh nine. We're looking at another very late night because the BACH agenda is long.
This is a very quick question. And it is both to um, staff, that is to uh, Mac and to Peter as well as to counsel, and that is is this, is this motion necessary? Or can staff undertake this without direction from the board?
You know, Erwin, it's, it's interesting that um, you just asked that question because I was pinging Tony. You know, it feels like we're getting pretty deep into, you know, sort of normal staff assignments. I think my question, I, I personally don't think a motion's necessary. I just want to make sure that we're hitting the board's expectations around communication with our membership or whatever the work task is. I don't think there's going to be a staff resource bust on this. I mean, I guess unless the board is imagining, you know, several night meetings and things that layer on top of other, like, but the stuff that Travis has been describing, these are things we're doing. We may just not be communicating with you all about it right now. So, and we, we can certainly do better at that if that's something you all want to know more about when some of these uh, things are going on. But anyways, to answer your question directly, Erwin, no, I'm not sure I view a motion necessary in this situation.
Director Dodd had her hand raised and then I'm really gonna.
Yeah.
Director Flashman, well, I'm sorry, Director Flashman, did you have a follow-up?
Well, the question wasn't answered by Tony, which is, I asked Tony as well.
Counsel?
I concur with Mac. I don't think that you need a uh, a motion to get this done. I don't think it's, I don't think that a motion isn't proper. Um, you may want to modify it if you want to go forward with that to direct the CEO to direct staff if we want to stick to the letter of resolution five.
Hmm.
But there's nothing that precludes a solution. I just don't. I think you're good either way.
Director Dodd, you had your hand up and then I'm.
Only because I had originally seconded the motion, which has now gone through some changes and discussion. And so um, at this point, I would not second the motion, having been persuaded by Mr. Cummins and others that there's no need for this motion. And by the discussion that we are already engaged in doing what we can to help these uh, homeowners who are affected uh, find a solution to the problem. So uh, I don't know, I will let you, President Farrell, decide the parliamentary procedure, but I do not second the current motion.
So, so all we do at this point, uh, Director Dodd is vote. And I'm gonna cut off debate unless somebody's gonna really get upset. So let's have a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Although, aye, Director Johnson votes aye. All those opposed to the motion will say no?
No.
Aye. That is Director Dodd, Director Juszczyk, Director Perry, Director McPar, Director Patraine, Director Grywicz, Director Flashman, you voted?
I voted nay.
Nay. Okay, it's uh, one to seven. The, the motion is defeated. Director Juszczyk?
I move that the Board of Directors for Reston Association include the following recommendation with the ballots. Quote, based upon the uncertainties surrounding the provision of cooling services to Reston Association members by Relac LLC, the Board of Directors for Reston Association recommends that members vote in favor of revoking section six dot two B fifteen of the first amendment of the deed of amendments to the deed of dedication of Reston.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Director Patraine, second by Director Johnson. Uh, discussion? We ready for a vote on this? Director Perry, then Director Dodd.
Um, Jen, I, I agree in general with the motion. Um, my concern is plain language. Um, I, I don't know if there's any way to potentially make that a little bit um, simpler for people to follow. But I, I will send that there.
That's the language, I believe Director Juszczyk was uh, reading from the language that was recommended by counsel for this purpose. Director Dodd?
Yeah, I would, uh, I'm happy with that language, but would also like to uh, ask counsel whether he could support adding an, an additional sentence that would say um, a vote in favor of this rec, uh, referendum would give homeowners or give affected property owners the choice to stay with their current cooling system or to make changes for their individual use. I'm happy to wordsmith it, but, but adding one sentence of clarification that a vote in favor of the referendum gives homeowners a choice that they didn't have before.
I'm okay with it as long as it comes in parentheses underneath the statement and preferably in a different type of font, italics or something like that.
Sure.
That's an amendment. Is there an objection to that amendment?
No.
Nope.
Hearing and seeing no objection to the amendment, Brittany, it is so ordered. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
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 That is unanimous of all those present and voting. Um, there being no further business before the full Board of Directors, I would declare this a special meeting of the Board of Directors adjourned at nine sixteen. And we'll start uh, the BACH meeting here after a couple of minute bio break.
We are on the same channel or do we have to register?
Gotta go out and come back in again.
Okay. It's a different meeting.
Different, a different meeting.
Thanks.
Number, different numbers.
Thank you.